So he wants us to do things without grumbling. As each one has received a gift, minister it to one another. And whether you realize it or not, if you're a child of God, if you're saved, you have a gift. Most likely, you have gifts. And we need to use them, the gifts we've received. He says, minister it to one another as good stewards of the manifold grace of God. If anyone speaks, let him speak as the oracles of God. If anyone ministers, let him do it and do it as with the ability which God supplies, that in all things, God may be glorified through Jesus Christ, to whom belong the glory and the dominion forever and ever. But we mess up a lot of times and we start putting the glory on ourself if we're not careful, rather than on God. Look at a couple of reference notes here from 1 Peter, chapter 4. So it says, "Live expectantly, for Christ is coming." Getting ready to meet Him involves continually growing in love for God and for others. So it's important to pray regularly. It's also important to reach out to people. Your possession, status, and power will mean nothing in God's kingdom, but you will spend eternity with other people. Invest your time and talents where they will make an eternal difference. Some people, well aware of their abilities, believe they have the right to use them as they please. Others feel they have no special talent at all. And you know, there's this kind of address in here. Find yours, whatever your talent may be. And all our abilities should be used in serving others, and none are for our own exclusive enjoyment. A lot of people have a lot of talents, but then they use them for something that's not of God. So I want to look at a couple of scriptures here and talking about waiting. You would look at 1 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 13 through 16. 1 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 13 through 16. There should not be any, the only idle time you should have is your quiet time in prayer. And even that is not really the idling. But you're actively praying, just like Jesus said, wait here, watch and pray. 1 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 13 through 16, it says, "Till I come," well, I haven't seen him come back yet, "till I come, give attendance to reading, to exhortation or preaching, to doctrine or teaching; neglect not the gift that is in thee, which was given thee by prophecy, which the laying-on of the hands of the presbytery." The, you know, the people in the church meditate upon these things. "Give thyself holy to them, that thy propitizing may appear to all, so that benefits everybody. Take heed unto thyself and unto the doctrine, continue in them; for in doing this thou shalt both save thyself and them that hear thee." You know, so he gives us clear, clear instruction. Paul's giving young Timothy, it's just, uh, is applicable to us today. "Till I come, give attendance to reading, to exhortation, to doctrine." A lot of people say, well, I heard a guy, and I think maybe I've shared this before, you know cowboy? And he said, "I just don't like to be preached to. That's why I don't go to church." Well, you, uh, you plan on going to heaven? Because you're gonna be around a lot of church people, you know? And that's, a lot of people, they get that mentality. But you know, I heard the example yesterday, uh, we were at, I think it was yesterday or the day before, we were at a ballgame down in, uh, where were we at?
Karen Creek.
Karen Creek. And, uh, we're playing a school down there. The guy got up and he gave a little sermonette before the game, the coach, the other coach did. And, uh, we were at a Christian school, so you know, they do stuff like that, not getting the pantsuit off. And he got up and talking about dying. Y'all heard him talk about that example before. And he said, "I didn't reject Christ, I rejected His Christians, His followers, because they're not nothing like Him." Of course, that's, you know, that's a cop-out, at the end of the day, that's all that is. Uh, but you know, how are we influencing people? How are we using the gifts that God has given us? So the Lord has given us through Peter here, and through Timothy, and through some other scriptures that we'll look at, at what we're to do and how we are to wait. And we don't need to just sit around and let our talents waste away. It says, "If anyone ministers, let him do it as with the ability which God supplies, that in all things, God may be glorified." Philippians 4:13. Everybody probably knows that scripture. But do we properly apply that scripture? So it says, "In all things that God may be glorified." So, "I can do all things through Christ that strengtheneth me." And I think one of the things, well, two things that a lot of people overlook in that scripture there. One is the fact that here is Paul talking to the church filled by, and encouraging them. And where's Paul right now at this setting in his life? He's in prison. At best, he's under house arrest, guarded, house arrest, armed guards, at best. So here he is, saying, "Look, man, I could do anything to Christ." And you gotta know that some people, believers, are saying, "Yeah, see where that got you, buddy? I'm just gonna be quiet and be in the secret service of Jesus over here. We got too many people doing that." And so, one, we have to realize what Paul is saying. And then you go a little bit further down there, verse 19. He says, "My God, I shall require all your needs according to His riches," not based upon, "but according to His riches and glory by Christ Jesus." So, but the other thing that we often overlook in there is, "I can do all things through Christ." But a lot of times, when we try to do things, and we're not doing it through Christ. We're not doing it in Christ. We're not doing it with Christ. We're doing it on our own. When we, you know, people say, "Well, you know, y'all just don't recognize my talents, so I'm gonna go somewhere else." You know, "Y'all didn't, you know, not enough people thanked me for that whatever I brought, and so I'll just go somewhere else." And that ain't through Christ. That ain't through Christ. And of course, you gotta be in Christ to do anything through Christ. So just a few things there. But while we're waiting, we need to be doing kingdom work. So bring us to a question there at the top of page 86. What does it mean to be serious and watchful? Or, or serious and sober? To be, what does that mean in one's prayers? What does it mean to be serious and watchful in one's prayers? It's always so hard to wait for somebody to answer. I read a thing that said you're supposed to wait. It's tempting to just go ahead and say the answer, but... I told my Sunday school class I was gonna get that Jeopardy! song on a little thing where I could just push the button when that song would start playing. When I asked the question. Or maybe I should give you all the answers and then you ask the question. Do it like them. Anybody, what does it mean to be serious and watchful in one's prayers?
Well, I think pray with expectation, pray with faith, you know? And expectation.
Yep.
And be careful what we pray for.
Yeah, pray in this.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, you know, and we need to pray, and the Bible says, even our enemies. Even our enemies, even the people that we don't like, we need to be praying for. So, you know, to be serious or sober minded is to be adamant, to be intentional with and about our faith and about our gifts. And, you know, you people come in and say, "Well, I don't, uh, I don't wanna do that." And that's how we are. And you know, and I've seen people that are so talented, you know? But they have that, "I don't wanna" attitude. And I've seen people run from God over that. And, uh, you know, I did not wanna be a preacher, um, but God directed that differently. And I remember the very first time I preached at big church, is when I had, I had found out I was being moved to Texas with my job. And I told my preacher there, Brother Tommy Grille in Mississippi, that I'd like to just get up this morning and just, you know, give a goodbye to the church. This was a couple of days before that Sunday. And he said, "I got a better idea." He said, "You can preach for your going away." And that's the first time I ever got to stand up before a big church and preach. And I was scared to death. I don't know how adamant or intentional I was, if I made any sense at all. But we need to be adamant. We need to be intentional about our faith and about our gifts and everything, and utilize them. We need to be watchful. And that's always being ready in all circumstances. Because you never, ever know, you know, who's watching? Or how are you gonna have an impact on people? If you would look at Matthew, chapter 24. A couple of these apply in a couple of places. You might see it over Peter too. Matthew 24, verse 42. Matthew 24, 42. You know, a lot of times, we, uh, we act like we got forever. And then sometimes, in some cases, we act like we don't know about tomorrow. The Bible tells us in verse, uh, chapter 24, verse 42, "Watch therefore, for you know not what hour your Lord does come." You don't know when. We need to be ready. So we need to be adamant, we need to be serious, we need to be watchful, we need to be ready. And look at, uh, chapter 26, verse 41. And again, staying ready, you know? A lot of people, I've been around some people, say, "You ready?" It's, "Poo, man, I stay ready, keep from having, get ready." We need to be more like that spiritually.
Right.
Verse 41, chapter 26, "Watch and pray that you enter not into temptation; the Spirit indeed is willing..." But what's weak? The flesh. The flesh is weak. The flesh is weak. I, I, there's like a flesh weakness button that goes off at like 12 o'clock in churches. I'm pretty sure. And the temptation starts. And nobody, nobody will look at their clock anymore than about noon on Sunday in church. That's why I don't have a big old clock in the church. Because everybody'd be turning around. Uh, First Baptist, I filled in a bunch there before, and they got one, it's the size of a computer monitor, sitting on the sound booth back there, flashing. And, uh, everybody'd be turning around, looking at it, if we ain't careful. But the Bible says, we need to watch, we need to pray, watch, you know, being ready, being attentive, that you enter not into temptation. There's a lot of temptation all around. Just look at 1 Corinthians, chapter 16. And verse 13, 1 Corinthians 16, 13. Anybody wanna read that?
I'm reading. 1 Corinthians 16, 13?
Yes, ma'am.
"Watch, and stand fast in the faith; quit you like men, be strong."
So again, and there's, this is repeated in a bunch of places. We're gonna look at a few more. But we need to, we need to be, be ready, right? Watch, that's, that's pay attention. Stand fast in the faith, again, that is very critical. Quit you like men, be strong. You know, quit being like the world, be strong. Stand fast in your faith. All right, 1 Thessalonians, verse 5, or chapter 5, verse 6. Somebody wanna read that?
"Therefore let us not sleep as do others, but let us watch and be sober."
So let us, again, don't, don't get lazy or doze off spiritually as do others. You know, the world ain't paying no attention. The world looks at it and says, "Boy, you Christians, y'all are so silly. Y'all, y'all been talking this stuff for 2,000 years, and Jesus ain't never come back." And what I want to tell them is, you better be thankful He hadn't. Because you'd wake up at hell, is where you would wake up. And you know, but we're just, we're not that serious about our faith. Colossians, chapter 4. Verse 2. Somebody want that one?
"Continue in prayer and watch in the same with thanksgiving."
Again, we see that, we see that theme again. We see Paul talk about it, we see Matthew talk about it, we see Paul talk about it to many of the churches. You know, be read, "Watch." We see that, that word, "Watch," is pay attention, you know, continuing in prayer. We see a lot of talk about prayer. You know, and prayer isn't just stopping and bowing your head. I mean, you could be praying a lot of times. All right, Psalm 121, I'll read that, just, it's not that long a song, but, uh, I love this song. "I will lift my eyes unto the hills, for whence cometh my help; my help cometh from the Lord, which made heaven and earth; he will not suffer thy foot to be moved; he that keepeth thee will not slumber; behold, he that keepeth Israel shall neither slumber nor sleep; the Lord is thy keeper; the Lord is thy shade upon the right hand; the sun shall not smite thee by day, nor the moon by night; the Lord shall preserve thee from all evil; he shall preserve thy soul; the Lord shall preserve thy going out and thy coming in, from this time forth and evermore." So we can, we can depend on God. But again, all of these things, these promises come with, you know, as we're obedient. As we're obedient, as we're obedient. All right, somebody look up, uh, I'm gonna give y'all a couple here. Look up Micah, chapter 7, verse 7. Who wants that one?
Fisher.
All right, Melissa and Fisher, if you want one?
Yep, he does.
2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 2, 3, 4. Y'all wanna wrestle over that? All right, who's got it?
Micah 7.
7, 7, sorry.
"Therefore I will look unto the Lord; I will wait for the God of my salvation; my God will be mine."
So as, as we wait, and, and a lot of times, we get way out ahead of the Lord, or, or we get way behind Him and lose sight. And we study about the, uh, the ark of the covenant here a good bit back. On our Sunday morning sermons, we looked at several. And the whole thing is, Jesus told them, says, you know, "Keep the ark out front. When it moves, you move, but keep a safe distance there, so that we keep our focus, and you know, we don't get too far, we don't get too close." And you know, that's what Micah's talking about there. It says, "I will wait for the God of my salvation." 2 Timothy, chapter 2, or chapter 4, I'm sorry, verse 2 and 3, 4.
"Preach the word, be instant in season, out of season; recruit, review, exhort with all long-suffering and doctrine; for the time will come when they will not endure sound doctrine; but after their own lust shall they heat to themselves teachers, having itching ears; and they shall turn away their ears from the truth, and shall be turned unto fables."
So in season and out, we need to be ready. You know, preach the word, teach the word, live in it out loud. You know, we can all participate in what this is talking about there. You know, in season, and what, what is the word good for? It's good for recruit, to review, to exhort with all long-suffering, suffering, and doctrine. You know, we need to know the truth. And then there will come a time when they don't wanna hear sound doctrine, you know? And sometimes you point things out, and people, then they get, they get really upset about it. Because in their mind, they had some little justification to do that, whatever they did. And I wrote above this, 2008, and then I wrote a comment. Apparently that's 2016, I wrote again. And then I put another one, or 2020. It just, we just keep repeating the same type of things. We don't wanna hear sound doctrine. And I don't, I don't know, in my lifetime, I think it's the worst it's ever been. If you look just across the scope of how things are going there. You know, having itching ears, and even in our churches, we have a lot of our churches, I found that statistic earlier, at least as far as Southern Baptist statistics go, 25 churches a year are closing. Five on average are being started. There's a big push now to replant some churches that just need help. They just need help, so they're going in and doing some, some replants there. But having itching ears, they don't wanna really hear it anymore. And they shall turn away their ears from the truth, and shall be turned unto fables, you know, or fabricated stories that Greek talks about. So how does, here's a question for you. How does fervent love for one another cover sins?
So I thought that was a strange question, because my love can't cover anybody's sins. It's only the love of Christ that covers sins. But by me loving someone, I can show Christ which can cover their sins.
Yep. And that's, I mean, that's the absolute point of what he's talking there. Yeah, and we can't save anybody, but we can show them the love of Christ. Or we can claim to be a Christian and show them something else. And that's a lot of folks doing that. And, uh, you know, and not telling somebody the truth. Well, I didn't lie to them, but did you tell them the truth is just as wrong. And a lot of times, we choose friendship over relationship. And their relationship with Christ, and we say, "Well, I don't, I don't wanna." You know? If the Lord's laying it on your heart, you know, sometimes you've got to say the things that are hard to say. Somebody look up Joel. We used these scriptures the other day, but Joel, somebody want Joel? Everybody's like, "Let me find Joel first before I..." That ain't one we go to very often. I got, I cheated, I got a little sticker around here, y'all. All right, you want Joel, chapter 2, verse 12 and 13? And then verse 25 through 27?
12, 13.
Yes, ma'am.
"Now therefore saith the Lord, turn to me with all your heart, with fasting, with leaping, and with mourning; so rend your heart and not your glory; return to the Lord your God, for he is gracious and merciful, slow to anger and afraid of anger, and he relents from doing harm. Won't change who knows if he will return and live, and leave a blessing behind him, a great offering and a great offering for the Lord your God?"
That's a question. And, uh, 24, 25, 26, and 27, I'll say.
"So I will restore to you the years of this morning worship, as eaten, the frolicking worship, the consuming worship, and the chewing worship; my great army, which I have ten months; you shall eat and play, and be satisfied, and praise the name of the Lord God, who hath dealt wonderfully with you; and my people shall never be quick to show." 7, 27?
Yes, ma'am.
"Then you shall know that I am in the midst of Israel; I am the Lord your God, and the Lord of my people shall never be quick to show."
So just, you know, a description of the Lord's love, of the Lord's forgiveness, of the Lord's patience. And these are attributes that show the love of God. These are attributes that people should see in us, even though we have a really hard time sometimes with forgiveness. And it turns into a, they talk about, uh, the King James uses a canker worm, it turns into a sore. And it will not heal until you offer that forgiveness. And when you offer that, you are offering that, that, that love like Christ. All right, 1 John 1:9. Somebody wanna read that one? Go ahead, brother, go ahead.
"He is faithfully just to forgive us sins, and to cleanse us from all unrighteous."
So he'll forgive everything. So God will forgive everything.
With your face.
God will forgive everything. We say we're Christians, yet we won't forgive everything. Where's the disconnect? Because the Lord says we're to be like Him. The Lord, matter of fact, the Lord took it a little bit further, because there were people in biblical times that had problems with forgiveness. And He thought it pertinent enough to put here in front of us, because He knew we were gonna suffer with that. And He went so far as to say, "You know what? I'm gonna tell you this. If you don't forgive, then I ain't gonna forgive you. I will withhold my forgiveness, and you are going to suffer. You're gonna suffer. It'll start spiritually, then it begins to affect us mentally just a little bit, and then it will end up affecting us physically."
Right.
Withholding forgiveness is a dangerous thing in the life of a Christian. And we continue to pray and talk to the Lord and do these things. And the Lord says, "Until you get that straight, I'm not hearing you. I'm not hearing you, not listening." So again, just that love that we should emulate. All right, next question. What are the challenges of being hospitable? Now, here's the tough part, without grumbling. Anybody got a comment on that?
Pray for yourself.
Ma'am?
Pray for yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
"I pray for myself always in church. I conduct myself like a Christian should, not to cause anyone to stumble, or see something in me that is not pleasing to God."
You know, we've talked about it in here. I mean, we're, we're not doing our job, we're not paying attention. If we have someone that comes in the church and sits by themselves, we're not doing our job, we're not being hospitable. We're not doing our job if we don't go around and visit. Now, now people have physical ailments, and that's, that's a different thing. But if, we need to fellowship, we need to visit. You see a face you hadn't seen before? And, you know, go over there and talk to them, love on. I taught, one of my friends, he's in a, you know, a pastor friend in a much bigger church. He said, "I have to be kinda careful." Say, "Man, where you been? Sitting on that side of the church for the last four Sundays, where you been?" You know? He said, "You kinda gotta handle things a little differently in a big church, because you might not see them, even though they're there." But we do need, you know, don't go up and just assume they've been gone. Uh, we need to love on people. We need to let them know they're loved. And we do need to let them know, you know, if they have been here, that we've missed them, and, uh... You know, again, it's just, without grumbling. So, and the thing is, it's not about you, it's about Christ. You know, when you give, if you're gonna grumble about it, just keep it. If you're gonna volunteer to do something, and you're not gonna, just don't volunteer. Don't get started and then not finish. Or you do it, but then you grumble the whole time? Just don't. Because you know, especially with our kids program, that's really harming the kids and things. And emergencies happen and things like that. But you know, don't do things grumbling. Don't volunteer to help Nana, Joe, and all them in the kitchen if you're gonna grumble the whole time in the kitchen. We don't need that spirit. Our church does not need that spirit. And then we have somebody that comes in, it's their first Wednesday night, and they ain't been here. And then you back there in the servant line grumbling, because you got to serve. And they didn't pray enough for themselves, did they?
I have to pray. I have to with your mouth.
We all should. We all should, because you know, it's, it's easy to mess up. All right, proverb. Look at proverb 16, verse 18. Somebody wanna check? All right, pride. Proverb 16, 18. Pride goeth before destruction, and a haughty spirit before fall. Sometimes, sometimes we get proud for it. We think we're doing it for ourselves. And then there's this haughty spirit, you know, we get a little arrogant. You know, Paul was very arrogant until he met Jesus Christ. And that's, you know, that worries me about some people. You, you see that, that, just that they always have that grumbly spirit. That is not of God. They always have that complaining spirit. That is not of God. That's a gift, not from God. Little devils gave you one there. And you know, we, we need to be careful. And Paul was very arrogant, very, very high on himself. Very powerful in what he did. And I love the fact that, you know, that the Lord included all of that, it's right before. And you know what a lot of Christians, though, would have done? Rather than approach him, Paul, or Saul at the time, we would've went the other way. And we'd have just let him alone, and said, "You know, ain't no hope in that fellow. I ain't even gonna fool with him." And, uh, but Jesus didn't. Jesus stopped him, and He asked him a simple question. "Why are you fighting against what you, you know what's right?" And, and He didn't know Christ, didn't know who Christ was personally. And He said, "Come, is that, is that you, Lord?" He says, "Yeah, it's Jesus Christ." "Why are you kicking against the bricks? Why are you, why are you fighting against this? What you're headed to do right now is wrong." You know, sometimes maybe we need to step in with a friend. And say, "You need, you need to stop." You know, you, you know, in a lot of cases, you know, maybe you say you're a Christian, and I'm not judging you, but I'm just telling you, where you're headed is not a good place. What you're participating in is not spiritually healthy. You need to stop, and sometimes, you know, but we won't do that. We'll add on to hurt their feelings, they'll get mad at me. It may be worth scattering seeds and losing that friend. Because if they're really a Christian, them seeds are gonna take root, and your relationship will be established again. Sometimes we have to do those things. And, uh, and I love, I love Paul's response. "What do you want me to do, Lord? What do you want me to do?" I wish more of us would look at things like that. When something is a little difficult, something that's a little uncomfortable, we hear something that we don't really like, that maybe is getting in our business and trying to change our norm a little bit. I wish we would look and see, well, maybe Christ is trying to tell me something here. Uh, chapter 28, proverb 28, excuse me, 29, verse 23. "A man's pride," and this, this is, uh, to tell you one, not just the man here. Solomon is sharing some of his wisdom. "A man's pride shall bring him low, but honor shall uphold the humble in spirit." We talked this morning about meekness, about meekness. "Honor shall uphold the humble in spirit." And I wrote some things out of order here, just because they kinda pop in my head afterwards. Chapter 11, verse 2. We get proud for it. And a lot of times, we get proud for about things that ain't got nothing to do with the church. But we'll leave the church over it. Got nothing to do with the church, but we'll leave the church over it. And we have to be careful, and it ends up, you know, it's just worldly things. Chapter 11. Chapter 11, verse 2, riches, or excuse me, "When pride cometh, then cometh shame; but with the lowly or humble is wisdom." And when we start that pride, or that arrogant, or that haughty spirit begins to step in, we get into a dangerous place here, chapter 18, and verse 20. Bouncing back and forth a little. Before construction, before destruction, before destruction, the heart of man is haughty. Before honor is humility. Before destruction, the heart of man is haughty, and before honor is humility. You know, Mr. Putin, he's pretty haughty, pretty arrogant, a pretty prideful man right now. And I can assure you, in the end, I don't care how powerful he is, how many jets, how many bombs, he's gonna lose, and it's not gonna work out good for him, because he's got the majorly haughty spirit there. All right, let's flip back into the New Testament, 2 Corinthians, chapter 10, and verse 17 and 18. 2 Corinthians 10, 17, 18. "But he that glorified, let him glory in the Lord; for not he that commended himself is approved, but whom the Lord commended." Yeah, I've shared this one with you before, it's an old preacher from over in deep east Texas, Hoover Hill, I think it's a little community over there. We went to a revival or something there one time, and man, he'd get excited, he'd go to clap, and he'd say, "Y'all, come on, give the Lord a hand clap." And, you know, "The Lord commended." "For not he that commended himself is approved, but whom the Lord commended." We need to give the Lord a hand a little more often, for sure. We've got just a couple more questions here, we'll be at a good stopping point. So, question for you again, how does using your gifts in ministry to other people qualify you as a good steward of the manifold grace of God? References to that scripture, or Peter we read there a minute ago. So how does using your gifts in ministry to other people qualify you as a good steward?
If you're using them to glorify Him and not yourself, you're taking the blessings He gave you and extending it to somebody else.
Just bless them. That's right. Paying forward, that really, you know, we've heard a good bit about that, different restaurants and stuff, I think we talked about it before, that one chick, I can't remember where it was at, it went on for like nine hours or something. It just, it started with one, and, you know, man, we need to do those things more often in the life of a Christian, and use those gifts to minister to other people, and, you know, be a good steward of, you know, God's given, He has been very gracious to me. I would venture to say, He's probably been very, very gracious to a lot of you. Why would we not extend that grace to somebody else that maybe did something we didn't really like, or whatever? Why don't we extend some of that grace that God has given us? And, you know, the Bible says that while we were sinners, Christ died for us. I mean, fresh on the front of His mind, sinning, and He did it anyway. That's love, that's love. Romans, chapter 6, verse 13. Talking about gifts, and how we should use gifts. You know, a lot of people have some wonderful, wonderful gifts, and they don't use them for God. You know, if you think of, you know, I watch some sports, about the only time I watch basketball is if Cameron's got it turned on, and I'll watch it with him sometimes, and, of course, around the NFL, the Super Bowl thing, we talked about this the other day, you know, a couple of those guys use that platform to share their faith. You can use your gifts, all kind of ways you can use your gifts, and as a platform, but how are we using them? Verse 13, chapter 6 of Romans says, "Neither or don't yield your members as instruments of unrighteousness unto sin." You know, a lot of times, we go and we use these gifts, these instruments, whatever we may have, but we use them for unrighteousness. "But yield yourselves unto God, as those that are alive from the dead." You know, live like you believe it. "And your members as instruments of righteousness unto God." But how do we need to use what God has given us? As instruments of righteousness. Whatever that talent may be, maybe to play an instrument, maybe to teach a class, maybe some art talent you have, maybe it's to cook, prepare food. Use those as gifts of righteousness, not as gifts of unrighteousness. All right, the next one there, top of page 87. What does it mean to speak as oracles of God? Primarily, that's talking about those that preach or teach. You know, it says, "An oracle is a person considered to be a source of knowledge or wisdom, given advice, generally in times of trouble or uncertainty." Hey, y'all, y'all know my feet was pretty?
Beautiful with the feet and everything, carry the God's glory.
Y'all don't believe me? Y'all look at Romans, chapter 10. Brother, don't want to say it.
You don't believe that, look in Book of Revelation, because Pastor called an angel.
Romans, I just had to share Romans 10, 15 with y'all. "And how shall they preach, except they be sent, the Lord calls you, sends you? As it is written, how beautiful are the feet of them that preach the gospel, and feast, and bring glad tidings and good things." So, baby, right there. I got beautiful feet. All right, last questionnaire, we'll wrap up for tonight. In what practical ways do you look to God to supply the ability you need to be an effective minister of your gifts? In what practical ways? Any examples?
Well, in preparing a Sunday School lesson.
To actually prepare, you know, to get ready. And, you know, I love when Beverly does VBS, and all the application and illustrations and outfits, and, man, that just brings it alive to these kids. And, you know, we need to, we need to use our abilities and different things to show just how much we love, and just how excited we are. You know, if we go in our class, "All right, kids, let's read this verse. Okay, what do y'all think it is?" Oh, they're not gonna come back too many more times, because they feed through us, you know, they grow, they get excited through us, and when we're excited, and that's what I've told, you know, the church many times, and other churches, you know, the growth is gonna happen through you. That's where it's gonna happen, when you get excited about the Lord, and everybody else is gonna see that. Matthew, chapter 19, verse 26. "We think we can't do a lot of things, but the Bible says, 'But Jesus beheld them and said unto them, With men, this is impossible; but with God all things are possible.'" So the disciples, they were very confused at this time, and, you know, Jesus was taught, had just got through teaching, an illustration about how tough it is for a rich man to get into heaven, and some people would say, "Well, what did he say? You can't have, be rich and go to heaven?" No, it's not what he was saying, when you're in love with your money, you have another God. So Matthew 17, verse 20. "And Jesus said unto them, because of your unbelief, verily I say unto you, you have faith as the grain of a mustard seed; you shall say unto this mountain, Remove hence to younger, and it shall remove, and nothing shall be impossible unto you." You know, wholeheartedly, sold out to God. And when your will at that point is in line with His will, rather than like we talked about this morning, and we're wanting Him to superimpose, or get His will to line up with our will. Luke, chapter 1, verse 37. We're reminded, so an angel has come to marry here, and she's like, "There's no way this could be." And she's reminded, "For with God, nothing is impossible." We sell that one short a lot. But I think it's, it's because maybe we've tried to use the Lord out of context in some things, and nothing happened, and we probably ought to be really thankful it didn't, when we were doing things that weren't with God, because it says, "With God, nothing is impossible." Mark, chapter 9, verse 23. Same story reference that we looked at up in Matthew just a second ago, but from Mark's perspective, Jesus said unto him, "If you can believe, then all things are possible to him in belief." You know, we pray doubt a lot of times, and we don't do things because of doubt a lot of times. We think one thing or another, and, you know, one of my biggest fears to be a pastor was how in the world am I gonna prepare a sermon like ever so? And, you know, God provides. But we just, we don't, we don't act like we serve a God that can do anything, that nothing's impossible for Him. Why don't we? You know, Peter has reminded us in this lesson here, instructing us how to await the coming of Christ. And in a lot of cases, we're prepping for the end. We ought to be prepping for a new beginning.
That's right.
We're overlooking that, and, you know, prepping has become a big thing, that's a huge market now, prepping, prepping, prepping. We need to be prepping for a new beginning. We need to be living in a way that's gonna draw other people to Christ, that they can experience that, that new beginning that we're gonna all have one day, because the Bible says that He makes all things new. He makes all things new. So we're gonna stop right there. So a lot to think about, a lot of scriptures we covered there, we'll pick up at the introspection and implications, and that'll finish us up for this study. And as of now, Aaron will be prepared, his lesson, he'll be teaching us there, I don't know how long, but a couple Sundays, okay? Ish? If you like any stuff that starts popping in your head, but be praying prayer as he prepares for that, that's something that's kind of a knack for him, that he likes to look into and study, and share some of the prophecies that have come to fruition, so looking forward to that. But we got one more Sunday in here. "Will y'all stand, and we will be dismissed." Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, thank you for the opportunity, the comfort, the blessing, the pleasure that we have to come and be here free, comfortable. Lord, there are Christians in Ukraine and other places across the sea, Lord, that are under attack, and in many cases, Lord, simply because of their faith. But Lord, you have promised to wrap your arms of protection around us all. Lord, we may not be healed here, we may not be physically saved here, but Lord, if we know you as our personal Savior, we're all gonna ultimately be healed and saved completely and made new. Lord, may we live like it. May we tell others about it, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for your mercy, your love, your grace, and your forgiveness, your patience. In Jesus' name, amen.